Online at this point, so we're going to begin. Let's call to Mormon, the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee tonight at 6:30 PM. Welcome, everybody. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody, so we're ready to get started. So our agenda here, the first item is citizen comments, for which we have none. I wonder if we could potentially change that, some henceforth, to public comment? That's what we were talking about, right?
Yes, I had sent Mia an email just asking about that change.
Can we just change it because it would be reflective of our policy? Public comment is on what we'll call some henceforth. Thanks, Eva. You may actually say that to me, I think it just keeps calling to the crap.
Yeah.
All right, so on now to the consent agenda, and I will take the motion from our vice chair. I move to approve the consent agenda of October 11th, 2024. Travis, second. I think Jackie raised your hands, so I'm going to give Jackie the second there. Thank you very much, Jackie. Is there any discussion for the consent agenda?
I don't know.
Go right ahead.
To regarding the middle school career-connected partnership there. And so I just, I have concerns about additional pressure and raising anxiety for children when we know that they already feel enormous pressure and levels of anxiety. And I hope that we can always remember that our children, our middle school students are children first and foremost. And I'm wondering if you can share any insights around how the, what the developmental considerations are as this program is implemented? I don't know who I'm addressing it to.
And so do we have to pull it out to have discussion on it?
No, you can discuss it, but if somebody wants to object because there may be an issue, I guess the issue is, no, if you want to, you have an option. We can discuss the motion, but the approval of the consent agenda is a bundled approval. So the motion is to approve all three items.
Oh, so did I, you're not in order?
You are not, but if you are worried, if you want to vote on the consent, if you want to vote affirmatively on the consent agenda, but not on that one item in the consent agenda, and you'd rather have them pulled apart so that we vote separately on them, you can raise an objection that will pull the grant out, so you can vote no on the grant and yes on the rest of the consent agenda. But it looks like you maybe just want some clarification on this one item.
I'm just looking for information. I'm not trying to pull it out.
Excellent. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So I'm going to try to our superintendent to give us maybe a little bit of clarity on this grant.
I think I'll just ask Ms. Friend to come in at this point.
Sure, maybe if I may. So the title of the grant, I think, is potentially misleading. The title of the grant is associated with our innovation pathways, opportunities at the high school, and the intention there, I think, from the state, is to create opportunities for middle school students to start to begin to develop a sense of self-awareness based on their interests and their passions, so that by the time they enter into seventh and then eighth grade, they have an opportunity to have maybe a stronger sense of self and maybe some potential interest before they enter into high school. So the way that we have written the grant really is intended to support advisory at the middle level, and so you'll see in the breakdown, it's going to support our advisory curriculum, which focuses on sense of belonging and sense of self and interest, interest elizers, learning style profiles, and really working, students will work through a MIPA pathway, saying, aren't they interested in art? And so if you're interested in art, then maybe you're interested in this, and then they're going to end up with a portfolio, a digital portfolio, different than the high school portfolio, but through the advisory platform, which they can share with their families, and then just kind of walk away from middle school with like, hmm, okay, these are potential interests for me. Other components of the grant that we have written, the grant to support includes stipends to help work to build out this pathway, so it's developmentally appropriate, and specifically, as the grant in front of me, sixth grade will focus primarily on building the competency of self-awareness as they participate in activities designed to develop their confidence and emotional awareness. Seventh grade will focus on continuing to grow their knowledge of self through the completion of learning style even more, all as a part of a larger advisory curriculum. And then in eighth grade, they'll continue their self-exploration through open-ended journal prompts and learn about careers potentially related to their own passions and interest in subject areas. So we're excited about the grant because it is supporting a cost that wasn't an operating budget for the advisory curriculum. It's pretty exciting, as well as supporting an opportunity for student, for our staff to provide, be provided with some extra beauty compensation to work to build out the lessons so they're meaningful for our students and our portfolio of Neshoba graduate. And then the third element of the grant request is relative to supporting guest speakers to come in and talk to our middle school students and families, just about, like, in our middle school. As a, as a middle school educator at heart, I see this as incredibly developmentally appropriate for where our middle schoolers are at, is beginning to see themselves in the larger context of class and figure out who they are. So I hope that that provides a little bit more information and detail about how the grant will be utilized if it hurts.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Jackie. It's going to crosswalk really nice, too, with the rollout of the new IEP that for students who have special education services, because they're asking a lot more directed questions around like, who do you want to be when you grow up? And like having, I think, something like a foundation to be able to look to is really strength-based and exciting, so.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, raise your hand. All those against? No objections? All right, so thank you for that, and we'll now move on to the next item here, which is the school committee chairperson update. And I am happy to share with the committee that we have our new Bolton representative present with us. So everybody, welcome Robin Palama to the school committee.
Welcome, Robin.
Robin, we're really excited to have you. We're so grateful that you stepped up to volunteer here, and if you want to just give a brief introduction to the committee and say hi.
Sure. So I'm Robin Palama. I am an eight-year Bolton resident. I have a child in the sixth grade and eighth grade, and you know, I, my great neighbor, Amy Cohen, mentioned to me that this position was open, and I thought, you know, now is a good time to get involved. You know, I've been kind of letting all of you steer this ship for many, many years, and everyone's doing a great job. I've always been very impressed with Amy's knowledge at the bus stop, and I said, geez, I'd really be interested in learning a little bit more about this. So here I am, and I'm just happy to be here and very excited to learn alongside all of you, and I'm already very intrigued with what's going on. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Robin. Welcome. Another ancillary update, we do have a person from Stowe who has submitted a letter of interest for the vacancy for the Stowe seat, and the Stowe representatives are going to be attending this left board meeting on October 22nd to advance that process forward, so we might have another new member shortly. So moving on, guys, we're going to head over to our student representative report, and we have Ava here with us and Ryan, so take it away, guys.
So tonight, Neshoba Field Hockey is hosting their pick night against Algonquin. When I left the game, it was still zero to zero, but I'll keep you updated. And this week, we started the pilot flex schedule. Thursday, Tuesday, and Thursday, we have flex block, and then Monday, Wednesday, Friday is just longer classes.
So in our first on flex block, the juniors like went to set up the PSAT, make sure everything is ready to go, which it was, and that all went smoothly. On Thursday, we're going to be doing the NEAS student survey, bring that flex block, and then the rest, the next four, we'll give the students the opportunity, meet with any teachers they want, and then take care of any studying and things like that. And then, once the pilot closes, students and staffs will have the opportunity to provide feedback, and then it'll end in a staff vote, see how that goes. And I think, just like personally, and like the people I just talked to around, like, they're liking it a lot. They think the drop is kind of beneficial, that steer their focus to like less classes with more time. So that's, that's all.
Awesome. I wonder if the committee has any questions for the students? Yeah, that's exciting. Thank you so much for persevering through that pilot of the new schedule. We look forward to hearing the tale on what we are all going to do next.
Great.
Sure.
And to Ava and Ryan, Dr. Boynton and I finished our planning for our advisory group yesterday, and we're aiming for October 25th, quarter on flex block, to bring that group together for the first time, and ask the two representatives of the school committee to be those representatives on that group as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's it. You guys are always welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave. It is up to you, but thanks for being here, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right, so on to our next item here, and that is the superintendent's report. We're going to turn it over to Kirk.
Should I share everybody in my business coming up at Cleveland's evening?
Yeah, that's probably.
Just so you guys know, we'll go through our report this evening at seven o'clock. Attorney Gleason and I will be exiting to attend the planning board meeting in governance. Sometimes we have conflicts in our meetings, but this is an important area as we're getting some permitting processes done for the high school building project, so our attendance is necessary there at that time. So that will dive into the report so that we can then get to the goals, hopefully. May I share? The first part I'd like to share with you in the report is around generative AI guidelines. We're providing some generative AI guidelines to our digital learning and innovation director, Jeff Spahnowitz, so that we can explore the potential of AI in the educational setting, but do so in a responsible, balanced approach. As we know, this can be a very valuable tool to leverage learning, but it also comes with understanding best practices. And so in doing so, we're going to be putting proper safeguards into play to do that. This is, Spahnitz is going to talk in more detail at the November presentation, digital learning presentation, but we, I asked if, to bring this forward to the committee now that we're working on this with our teachers, to demonstrate we're going to proceed forward safely and monitor closely. So prioritizing student engagement, privacy for all AI-related activities, evaluating the tools for their learning experiences, providing the PD to staff on responsible use, and supporting, we also want to support personalized learning and creativity with applications, and that those AI initiatives line with our technical and learning standards. In bringing it forward to you tonight, it also gives me to, an opportunity to sort of solicit some participation. I know Mr. Simon has expertise in this area, and I reached out to Mr. Simon, but wanted to publicly acknowledge that we would love for you to participate with us in sort of the development and crafting of these guidelines with our teachers. While we already have the framework designed, your lens, I think, would be very helpful, particularly since it's such immensely speedy advancement in the impact of learning in the classroom. So if Mr. Simon wouldn't mind joining us, we'd love to have him.
Thanks, John Dern.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Spahnitz is excited about that possibility as well, and so we'll be connecting both tomorrow, the email, so we can schedule some times together. Part of the update that you didn't have initially when this packet came out was Project 211, because that happened last night. Project 211 is an advocacy initiative through the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. The 211 represents the 211 districts in this past year, were in the whole harmless category for funding a state aid, thus we got the minimum increase per student for our Chapter 70 funds. Mr. Walcarin has free permission to jump in if I need any assistance in Chapter 70s as it's a very complex formula. But basically stated, it's this, Chapter 70 was a formula developed in 1992, and there's been some adaptations to it a couple of times. And it is the best system we have today that doesn't necessarily always work for funding schools. And the Chapter 70 formula impacts urban, suburban, and rural schools differently. And so that's not to say one over another, because each, no matter what setting you find yourself in, there are challenges that come with funding schools, but we know it needs work. I currently sit on the legislative committee for NASS, the Massachusetts Association for School Superintendents, and I spoke with our executive director, Mary Gork, today about the Mars presentation last night. We have our task force at NASS that is working on this issue as well. So through both of those avenues, we'll be working with our legislators in advising on restructuring for that, because it's going to be important for superintendents to be at the table with any guidance to the state. And our legislators are saying, yes, we know there are some fixes that need to be done. So for instance, our foundational aid comes in at a certain dollar amount, and while it may increase per pupil year over year, it doesn't close the gap of what the cost to educate is year over year. So there's complexities to that. We'll be coming back to the committee as things develop with that, but I think you all know that with adjusting legislation is a difficult, long, and arduous task. But coming out of the budget season we had last year, I want you to know that we, Neshoba, are in the arena with having the conversations to work on that for the future. So with that, I'll take any questions before we move on to the MTSS update.
Yes, Scott.
With respect to the AI, do you have intentions to require that all of the teachers allow it or not allow it to be used? Or are you going to call for a consistent approach across classes?
I think that's the whole point of what we're trying to do, is to get some groundwork laid on that, and to develop and have some standards around that. It's accelerating so quickly that, this is why we need to memorialize these things and provide that teacher for our guidance, because frankly, for many of our teachers, for me, as a superintendent, it's like, this is kind of scary, because it's so unfamiliar to me. How do I get it into a place where I can use these tools in a very effective way that helps me do my work? So that's kind of the aim. And I think Mr. Spahnitz, when he comes in November, will address some of those things as well, and we'll key him to your question.
Any questions?
Just while, while we're on the AI topic, it's amazing and scary at the same time, but are there, are you guys also looking at how do you, you know, I hear stories about kids who can go online and write a paper through AI, right? And even teachers are having difficulty identifying the paper that was written by a student or written by AI. Are there any kind of guardrails or anything you can kind of do to prevent? I mean, I don't know if I'm using the right term, but do you know what I'm saying? Like, it can be used for good and it can be used for bad. Are you looking at it all in, or?
This is what we're diving into. It's funny you ask that question. Just last Thursday, I went into an AI generator and said, give me all the key characteristics to tell if a student paper has been produced by AI. So AI was telling me how to look out for AI, right? I use that to sort of illustrate, we recognize the paradox that we find ourselves in right now, and how do we embrace it? Because this is going, so like, there's no point into saying, well, we can't use it, can't use it, is it? And I think very low-level conversation is, is this cheating or not cheating is like one of the examples, where we got to be higher up above that. The digital learning presentation in November will address some of that.
Just as a quick flip side to that, I can go in and say, give me a college-level reading on imperialism, and now give me a ninth-grade reading level reading on imperialism. And so it actually can help with differentiating instruction, and it's incredibly powerful. It can be used for so much good, so I'm glad you're on to it. That's good news.
May I share a few, if you don't mind my request? Would you be willing to take, to go out of order and interrupt with the superintendent's goals to afford Attorney Gleason one, now, can you get to the planning board meeting?
So if there's no objection from the committee, we can advance the superintendent's goal agenda item to right now, and then we'll go back to the MTSS report, because Laura, I think, is the one who's going to present that, correct?
Yeah, I just want to say, they've got you on the agenda, they got us on the agenda at seven o'clock, so we're first out of the gate, so.
All right, so.
Yes, that is correct.
We always like a 10-minute presentation, Kirk, so.
Great.
On to the superintendent's goals.
If you wouldn't mind pulling up the goals document, because we're just going to speak from the goals document. As you all know, but I will repeat myself for new audience members and new members toward the superintendent's goals, as part of a process, it's outlined through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that we follow here in Neshoba. It also is reflective of a collective effort. It is not the superintendent's sole effort in developing and refining these goals. As a matter of fact, we were tuning our professional practice goal, my professional practice goal, as late as yesterday morning, to get in some of the specific activities that we'd be working towards there. So there's a lot of people that go into these efforts, and I want to thank them all for being a part of that process, including the members of my team that are here today. So that being said, if we can just, there are three sections, the superintendent goals, the district improvement goals, which are the four strategic objectives that are in our strategic plan, and then the third piece of this is part of the evaluation process, and that's the performance standard. We include this in the presentation of goals as a way to forecast, to shine to the committee the areas that the evaluation subcommittee have brought forward as, these are the areas the committee would like to see to focus on moving forward in collaboration with the conversation with me. So if we can scroll down to superintendent goal number one, the student learning goal. This goal should look very familiar to all of you, because it is a repeat of last year's student learning goal, and we're in a two-year cycle now. I would anticipate we continue to have this goal, because it builds upon itself as you are working on growth and acceleration over time. So this is an annual goal for us, that we're hitting the 70% target rate in our universal screening assessment measures in grades K through eight. And so in order to do that, we need to continue to maintain this goal, so that we can monitor that progress over time. It is an area by which when we work with principals, and we have our student school addresses in the summer, our mid-year updates, we're coming back to this sort of static point to get a general look, but then we bring it in with other assessments to get an understanding of what learning looks like in the system. So that is a continuation of a goal that you saw last year, and will continue to see. The second goal is the professional practice goal. And at the workshop, we talked about this a little bit, and we talked about disproportionality. And when we talk about disproportionality, we're thinking about students identified through their race ethnicity, income status, English learner status, or possibly disability, how they're placed into our courses, and are they proportional to the representation within that school system? So, in the school system. So as we looked at that, the statement reads, "Each and every student has equitable access to challenging high-level experiences that foster engagement and academic growth, with the goal of eliminating disproportionate enrollment in advanced courses among traditionally marginalized subgroups, race, ethnicity, income status, English learner status, and students with disabilities." I have been struggling, as Ms. Friend can testify, we've been going back and forth on a word, enrollment, right? And struggle to find the exact word to find there, but it's basically to say, students who are in class-challenging, rigorous courses, whether that be in middle school or elementary school or beyond. We know we have a differentiation model through our elementary and middle school years. We begin to specialize courses with accelerated math placement in the middle schools. So we're going to be looking at all those systems and practices, and how they impact ultimately how students enter into advanced coursework at the high school level. And so you can see some of the activities that I'll be doing this year with the high school leadership team around launching our student advisory council, looking at the course leveling process, the accelerated math process at the middle schools, reviewing prerequisite requirements, aligning criteria for teacher recommendations, looking at National Honor Society criteria with the faculty advisory board. As you heard, we're already piloting the model schedule that is going to open us opportunities for there, particularly with the flex block to accommodate some of those things. And then deeper work, deeper learning through Kleiscope, we're in year two now. So these are some of the activities that are tied into that goal of eliminating disproportionality in our courses based upon those identifying factors. So if we're doing that, what that means is, from a statistical perspective, can we reach the place of the predictability of courses students will be enrolled on based upon those factors? And that's just something we're doing deep study of and have to go into to work on that. But here's what that comes down to, and it's in the upper part of the planned activities, is the actions that are happening in the classroom around strong equity and differentiation practices meet the needs of all students, each and every student. So as we look at, for instance, the look force at the, in the DESI walkthrough and evaluation tools, those look force are best practice look force. A very obvious one I might put out there would be like, the success criteria for student learning is clearing a parent to the learners in the classroom would be a look for. So anyway, that's where we are in terms of those two goals. Those are the pieces that I think, I should just say for a moment, the other goals are around our four objectives that are in our strategic plan, that I think you've heard a lot about and are in depth about with each one of those activities. So we're on the progression, the timeline of advancing those objectives as well. And then I'm going to skip straight down to the identified performance standards. So this was feedback from members of the committee that were able to participate in providing the subcommittee that information. providing the subcommittee that information. And these are the standards in the superintendent evaluation rubric that came forward, student engagement being very strong. And I believe that that's one that we should always have because that's what we're about, engaged learning in the classroom. For those of you that are new to this document again, you can see the descriptions in the categories. So when we come to formative time at the end of this year and ultimately summative at the end of next year, this is the language and evidence throughout these two years are presented in this forum to show work towards that. Adjustment to practice is tied to student data because it's when we learn what students, how students are doing relative to those things, we then make adjustments. You can see management and operations, the social and emotional wellbeing. So this is around developing a diversified culture and support in these areas has been very important. So we want to have to be a focus. Family engagement continues to be a focus of ours and has been in the past, as well as supporting our students and commitment to high standards. So you have the document here and the detail there. We are on a two-year cycle and so this is something we continually come back to in meetings. So if there's detail that we need to bring forward, I'll always be happy to bring that forward. So we'll take any questions.
All right, I'm going to go with Amy first. Are you sure you have time for questions?
Yes.
Okay. My, I'll try to make quick, my, the question about are the goal related to traditionally marginalized groups and enrollment in the advanced courses? I was wondering if you had given any thought to tying that to the groups identified in the equity audit?
Yes.
As being under-enrolled instead of traditionally marginalized? If there's a way to just tie that more specifically to the equity audit?
Great question, thank you.
But that's where it came from, right Kirk?
Exactly. Making that explicit, I think would be important.
Amy?
Yeah, I had a question. The student learning goal, I know it deals mainly with K through eight and I was wondering if there was something at the high school where you were kind of tracking kids' progress or like looking at how, because I know all the STAR stuff, that's all like K through eight. And I didn't know if there was something kind of at the high school that connected to that goal.
We're beginning, we're embedding that into the professional practice goal around those practices. So we're going to be looking at the leveling of our courses, students enrolled in their AP courses, the performance of students in those courses as benchmarks for that. So as we're diving into that information, we'll be bringing that information forward as well.
Okay. Just to talk on to what Amy is saying, so I appreciate that we are trying to get these kids enrolled and that we're trying to make the classes more representative, but enrolling students is really just like the lowest hanging fruit. How are we going to ensure?
Yeah, this is why I was tied up on enrollment, right?
Once they're sitting in the chair, that they are actually, I mean, are they, are they prepared? Are they?
Are they getting this fourth grade?
Being given accommodations and?
These are the questions that have to surface from the examination of this, this area and that's why we're diving into it. That's the direction we got out of the equity audit is you need to look into these things. So to have the answers to those today, I don't have deep answers to that today. That's, I think, the driver behind getting into that with the professional practice goal.
And I like the look fours and all of those practices you're going to be instituting.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the goals?
Do we take about next?
We have to approve the goals at the next meeting.
So if we have, if we like ponder this as Dr. Fionna says and come up with more ideas in between now and next time, we should email you and then maybe?
Yeah, if you guys want to send those to me maybe by this weekend, I can send them to, meaning like Saturday morning so that I can send them to Kirk and like compile any concerns you might have and eliminate duplications and I can send it to Kirk and we can even have a conversation if need be.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, so more on this next week. We're going to move the agenda now to the MTSS update, but we are going to say goodbye to our superintendent. Thank you for doing that with Norman Bolton.
Okay.
All right. So everybody, on to the MTSS update and I'm going to turn to our assistant superintendent. Thank you, Friend, for that. You want me to, you want me to drive?
Yeah, I'm, I think just to the update.
I have an actual project to hold for an hour. An hour of the EPMI course. They don't have anything odd on here. No, I'm just kidding. Every number. Okay, there we go.
There are a lot of words on the page there and the committee will note and has already likely noted that there's a hyperlink slide deck providing more information at the end of the update. So I am not going to speak to the slides, but the slides are there to provide more details. And I'm happy to answer any questions now and moving forward about MTSS. If anyone on the committee or even moving forward, any of our family members have any questions relative to MTSS. So I'm going to do my best to provide an overview of what MTSS is and how we have worked to build some structures and systems here at Neshoba to implement MTSS. So over the past two years, we have been working to build the systems and structures at Neshoba to build out a multi-tiered system of support. And it is just that, it's a system, it's not an initiative, it's not a collection of strategies, but it's a system that involves multiple interdependent components from high-quality curriculum, like our high-quality curriculum we've just adopted for K to five literacy to strengthen our phonics and phonemic awareness and strong foundational literacy skills for our students, to scheduling work where we have now built in time for win time, hopefully flex time at the high school, time for professional learning communities. So teachers are engaged in conversations about student learning in collaborative teams with administration approach every week, our universal screening system, and just building a data literate learning community. Now with that, I will say our teachers are incredibly strong, they're incredibly dedicated, and the intent here to build out this multi-tiered system of support is to really make the system stronger so that it's not reliant on the teacher to proactively identify student need, to create interventions and structure, supervise students with additional targeted support or intervention or even enrichment and acceleration. It's really intended to build a system, but that's just what we do because the system is there. So over the past two years, we've been working on building out this system. The work is ongoing. It is not perfect. We are not there yet, but we are committed to continuing to strengthen our system to not only help our teachers, but to really make sure we're proactively identifying student need at the earliest moment possible. It's critical. So as the committee is aware, when teaching and learning is talking about high-quality instructional materials or curriculum review cycle or alignment of scheduling or the new pilot at the high school of the new schedule in tandem with the high school team, it's all in an effort to create a system-wide approach to build these multi-tiered systems of support. So MTSS in my mind is really the cohesive structure that really supports larger efforts that we're engaging in to strengthen the learning experience for our students. Every state has its own version of MTSS. So if you were to search for multi-tiered system of support, you will see different diagrams, different images, different reliance on different elements of the system. Massachusetts has a framework for MTSS that was updated in 2018 and universal design for learning was added along with an equity lens. And so that's the framework in which we have implemented and developed our framework here at Neshoba for MTSS. The framework has three tiers. Tier one is first instruction. Tier one instruction, high-quality tier one instruction by our classroom teachers that is differentiated and responsive to student need in the classroom. It also includes universal screening, which as you're aware, we have implemented STAR, the STAR suite for universal screening. So tier one, strong foundation of learning for all students. Tier two is intended to provide additional targeted support for students who are demonstrating need, who maybe are not responding to or just maybe need a little bit more in addition to tier one. So tier two support comes in the form of small group instruction or targeted instruction by the teacher, maybe during independent or group practice time within a lesson. Our win time, which has been built into the K to eight schedule, is an excellent time tutorials, another excellent time in a middle school schedule to receive tier two instruction. And hopefully at the high school, we will see tier two targeted support being available for students during the school day with a flex block. The professional learning community model is critical to tier two in that teachers are taking a look at our universal screen data, they're taking a look at classroom assessment data, they're having a conversation, problem-solving conversations with one another in the team and talking about students who are ready for more, students who are needing something extra and how those students can be regrouped during these pockets of time to receive what it is that they need. And then tier three is the most intensive type of support and intervention that's delivered one-on-one or one-on-two. This is where students with IEPs could be serviced, but I would also say MTSS is not a special education model, it's a general education model. So we may see students who would benefit from tier three who do not have an IEP. And so I would say we're, we have built out the system and the structure. There's work to be done, but the structure exists K to eight and it's underway at the high school, which we're excited about. As we step into this school year, we are prioritizing several key initiatives. We're going to continue to build out our HQIM in identified areas of high-quality instructional materials, continuing to strengthen our units, our curriculum units as it relates to high-quality learning experiences using the DESI unit unpacking tool, the looking at student work tool, and there's also a lesson internalization tool through deeper learning kaleidoscope. Those are tools that we'll be using with our six through 12 teachers. Internally, teaching and learning has built out an MTSS website for teachers so that teachers can access that internal site to say, say for example, I'm a fourth grade teacher and I have a student or a group of students who are struggling on X skill or concept, and then it provides a suggested list of interventions or targeted supports that the teacher could use. Our literacy specialists and our math and our literacy coaches have been incredibly helpful with building that out. We've also developed an MTSS handbook, which I know was linked in the materials at the end of last year. And then finally, we've been working, I should say finally, this is finally at the end of my sentence or my paragraph, we've been working on building just overall data literacy district wide, which continues to be a need, whether it's interpreting the STAR data and all the diagnostic information that we can glean from STAR, being able to interpret that as a classroom teacher, explain it to families and explain it to students when it's developmentally appropriate to celebrate their growth and areas to work on to develop their metacognition. Those are all areas of need and areas of continued work that we're engaging in. Over the summer, I had mentioned that we had just about 30 educators enroll in our DataWise course through Harvard at X and we are continuing to offer that again this school year and is an optional professional learning goal for staff. And we have another, I think, 34 staff who have enrolled in that, again, just helping to build our collective efficacy. And then in January, Ms. Manj and I are going to be updating, revising and redoing the D cap and that's our district curriculum accommodation plan that's long overdue for a review and an update. And she's bringing to us incredible knowledge around that. So you'll be seeing an update to the D cap this year from she and I. And then just in summary, I've included the slide deck with more detailed information about what MTSS is all about, what it means for us here at Neshoba, and then our next steps by grade span. That's linked in the slide deck as well.
Wow, thanks Laura. It's really great. Huge undertaking. Does anybody have any questions about the system that is being built?
First, thanks for all these materials and the slides. Quite comprehensive. The slides mention that stat process and a stat team and I wasn't entirely sure what this was.
The stat team is the student teacher assistant team and that is a team representative of different personnel within the school, building administrator, special educators, related service providers, counseling team representative. And the stat team is convened when a team, a grade level team or a teacher, a team of teachers has been providing these targeted supports, these intervention and the students not responding as would be expected. And, and so they bring this differentiated team together to do further problem solving to look more into it and parents become incredibly engaged in the stat process as well.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So I guess I was curious at the high school, so the continuum is kind of like, the first step is like the flex block is kind of the, like if students are struggling, they can get more support through the flex block? And then I know they have the student support center if they're struggling more than a little bit, I guess, but like kind of what's, I guess I'm wondering what's in the middle? Is that that BLC where the teachers are coming together and talking about what's happening on assessments and stuff in court, like in like, say, a math class or whatever, do you know what I'm trying to say? All teaching 10th grade math or whatever? And then they talk about strategies and implement them or I guess I'm trying to figure out the middle ground.
So we're definitely leaning into it. The proposed new schedule allows for two important components to help lift MTSS at the high school. And you speak to one of them, the flex block certainly, right? Providing students an opportunity to seek out or teachers to collect students and say, hey, you know, I want to review this with you again or let's retake this assessment, hopefully, that kind of thing. So that's an additional time that's not already available to our faculty. The complement to the flex block by PLCs, and this is leaning in new for the high school this idea, but the idea is that teams teaching the same content area, the same subject area are coming together, focusing on the four to four questions, what do we want students to know, what are we going to do if they don't get it, what are we going to do if they already know, they already know it and what does it look like? That the goal is that those teams will be focusing on those four questions. Right now, the high school is piloting, again, new, right? Brand new is using the DESI looking at student work tool for deeper learning. And they're trying that tool out as a foray into talking about student learning in the PLCs at the high school. So those are two new additions that focus on student learning that support MTSS. Yes, the academic support center is an incredible resource for students, but we're really trying to bake it into the cake and just make it part of, part of the structure of the schedule itself.
So they can do that during that pilot time, but then those PLCs, are they then meeting like after school or something or during professional development time since you're only piloting that?
So we're piloting the PLCs during the pilot schedule.
Right.
The work will continue in department meetings that are led by the department heads during that time, but it would. that time, but it would, you'd provide maximum opportunity if it was, we were able to, again, hopefully, you know, we'll pivot and whatever happens with the new schedule, but really making it part of the cycle would be incredibly powerful for teachers and for students. Two high school teachers here at the test. No pressure.
Thanks. Lindsay, you have a question?
Yeah, actually, so I just answered my main question, but then just a follow-up note, I also was just reviewing the materials, and we might want to check the MTSS flowchart link because it's no longer working.
The one at the end of the document.
Yes. Lindsay?
I wanted to make a comment. Oh, go ahead.
You can go, and then I'll go.
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment about, there's a sentence in there. There was a sentence in there that says, proactively identifying and addressing the unique strengths and needs of each student, and I just wanted to say thank you, thank you for that. I know that that is something that teachers have worked on with some more success than others for a long time, but I, I've never seen it stated so directly and in such a clear, across-the-board commitment. And so thank you to that, for that, and to get to that place of really knowing kids.
Thank you for noting that. I know what, in an area that it's, I'm passionate about all areas, but one area that I am passionate about is ensuring that those students who are demonstrating readiness for enrichment or extension, that we're also capturing those students along with those students who are needing some targeted support. And readiness looks different, right? It doesn't just have to necessarily be academic interest, so really opening our minds to the possibilities there and understanding the whole child is, is, there are so many possibilities that, again, you know, as I said to Special, we're leaning into it, but it is directly aligned with ensuring that we're really working to try and create spaces for each and every student.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, my question also has to do with the WIN time and the flex time, because I don't know if those are named differently because they are different things at the high school and the K-8 levels, but I have two high school students right now. I saw that they, looks like they'll be using an app during their flex time to kind of request meetings with teachers during that time. That's how I envision it, which sounds like what I need now, right? Like the same kind of concept. But at the K-8 schools, where WIN time is already kind of built into their schedule, do they also have an ability to, I know K-5, like, they might not be ready, they might not be able to handle that kind of thing. And in the middle-school levels, do they have any kind of ability to request what they need now during that WIN time? Or is this something more where it's pushed from the PLCs coming together and identifying, like, okay, this is a need, this group of students have, let's focus on that? Is it, do you see what I'm trying to say?
I do, I do see what you're trying to say, and I wouldn't want to answer it because I'm sure it's very, you know, by grade level and space and teacher. I do, I would argue that that would be a model that we should consider and think about, particularly as students, we're wanting students to develop their own sense of agency and independence and advocacy, particularly at the middle level, those are really important skills, so if it's always at the quest of, it's maybe a lost opportunity for us to provide students with an opportunity to say, you know what, I need another go like this, or I'd like to set up an appointment with, you know, Mr. Keveney. I know that our, our middle-school teachers are incredibly responsive to making sure that students are getting what they need and pulling them when necessary, but the idea of trying to figure out a way that we could maybe lessen the scaffold there would, may already be happening, but would be something, perhaps we could talk to the principals when they present their school improvement plans in November, too.
All right, everyone, I mean, this is the good stuff right here, so I'm glad we had a good discussion. Thank you, Laura, as always, for your very thoughtful presentation, but it seems like we are going to move on. All right, everybody, so on to new business, we have a very exciting couple of special guests today that are here to talk to us about some DECA field trip requests, so I'm going to invite them to the front table there. Mr. A and Ms. Norton, welcome to both of you guys.
Good evening, guys, thanks for having us again.
It's Laura, I'll maybe turn you or Ross to cue it up.
So I didn't practice Mr. A's last name, I usually do. Mr. Andriopoulos and Ms. Norton are here to represent, as always, and talk to us about potential approval for a DECA-related events.
Yep. We have a couple of events, we have our overnight states field trip, that we, I mean, both of these are annual events that we have done since, I mean, at least I started here 15 years ago. So our first trip, that's overnight, will be Ma, this is what, she's the details person.
February 27th, so we leave Neshova February 27th in the morning, it's a Thursday.
Lucky to have.
We'll return March 1st generally midday, and that is a Saturday that we do return. So we're in Boston for three days, two nights, students get bus back, forth through D bus or however mode.
If you guys are familiar with DECA, we start the DECA season off with a district competition. Usually that's a new missile, they moved us this year, we're going to Nichols College, we've joined a new district this year, so we're excited to work with some new schools. States is the next level up, we're anticipating around 100 students, last year we had 104.
Hardly optimistic, go 110.
Yeah, they did make the requirement, the qualification process a little harder this year, but we're keeping that number at 100 for now. Then the other trip that we're also requesting tonight is our Nationals trip, which we have the dates on as well, that is April 25th to May 1st. That will be in Orlando, Florida. It's a trip that we've done quite a few times, I think this would be my sixth time going down to Orlando, so I feel like I know it pretty well now. Last year, the last two years in a row, we've tied, we've set and then tied our school record with 26 students making it down to Nationals. Hoping to have the same type of turnout this year, those are two really healthy numbers and one of the best in the state. That is a much longer trip, as you could probably tell by the dates, it's five nights, six days. It's a much longer conference, but also there's a little bit of fun in there as well, as we go to the parks and there's leadership conferences and great opportunities for our kids to grow and apply their business knowledge. If you guys have any questions, we'd love to hear from you guys.
So I'll start off by saying, this is one of our high-profile programs at the high school, it's a program that so many kids take advantage of and actually energizes and inspires them to do great things out in the world. So we thank you guys so much for continuing this tradition year after year after year. Not all high schools do this, and we have a gigantic program that performs really well, so thank you for starters. So this travel is part of the, is part of the gig, so they're looking for our approval, but we are not going to take a vote until next meeting, just so that you guys know. It's your opportunity to ask some clarifying questions or probing questions if you have any.
I have questions about the cost for the, and I know you said to be determined, but like what was it last year for the?
Nationals, so Nationals last year was around $1,300. I actually just put a deposit down for some flights yesterday, because as you guys all know, the earlier you book them, the better. So they're looking at, flights are about $470 a person right now, even when you book this early, so that was kind of concerning. We have a lot of to-be-determined costs, like the hotel, we haven't got that information from DECA, we don't have a choice of where we stay, we stay where DECA tells us to. The only really choice we have in the matter is our flights and then our shuttles and how we get back and forth from the airport. Those all have to be figured out, but roughly it's around $1,300 for Nationals.
And that's with like cost defrayed from fundraising?
So we fundraised quite a bit, we had 260 members in our club last year. I think we fundraised between $10,000 or $15,000 last year, if you divide that out by the amount of members, it doesn't go very far, as you can imagine. What we tend to do with our fundraising dollars is save them for students who need financial assistance. I'd say two years ago, we had an extraordinary amount of students who approached us for financial assistance, and we were lucky enough to have that and have that covered. Last year, I'd say it was a little more reasonable, we had just a few students who approached us, so we, we were in better shape last year, but we tend to help those who need help rather than help all, if that makes sense, just because of, I think I actually just calculated this morning, I think we're projecting to spend like all in, all in all, over $100,000, $120,000 this year, when you think about all the costs between states and districts and nationals, so it's quite the undertaking, and I mean, I think, I mean, you guys know a little bit about DECA, it takes a village to run our program, like it's, it's far beyond Kate and I now. It's our building principal, it's our admin team, our coworkers are chaperoning, and I know I work with Ross quite a bit, lucky Ross, but we have a lot of people supporting the program, and it takes a lot.
It's a wonderful program.
Yep.
All right, looks like that might be it for the questions, so we thank you guys for coming.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we have a mock competition on December 5th, we'll, we'll send you guys an email, we'd love to have you come judge if you're available.
That would be wonderful.
And you should just experience DECA for yourselves.
That'd be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, everyone, so more to come on that next week, if you have any questions, please direct them to me, additional questions. So moving on, we have an exciting opportunity, the motion is actually, go ahead. So we have, on our, next on our agenda under new business is the appointment of our Bolton Town Administrator, Marie Sobolvaro, to the NRHS Building Committee. So with the exit of John Low from the position and Marie being hired to the position, she now is the Town Administrator Representative, and she collaborates with the other two town administrators to kind of represent that voice on this committee. And so we're looking at to have Marie step up and agree to do this work, but we need to conduct this kind of perfunctory vote to approve her membership on the committee because then it gets sent to MSBA, they take the committee composition very seriously. So, without further ado.
Okay, I move to appoint Marie Sobolvaro, Bolton Town Administrator, as an advisory member of the Neshova Regional High School Building Committee.
And I'll second that, is there any discussion? All those in favor, read, oh, was that?
I just wanted to ask a clarified question, you said an advisory member, so is that not a voting member?
Right.
Okay, then just clarify.
That's correct, and just to clarify, I think that Kirk is our only non-resident voting member.
Yep.
But there are, I think, maybe eight advisory members, including Rob Freeswick, Laura is on the committee, and others.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? Any votes? All right, thank you very much for that, everybody's unanimous, so we've already conducted the superintendent's presentation, so we're going to move on to the main event, taking a much real estate in the agenda.
For, for now and for a while.
So you guys know from an email that I sent out that the MASC has been quite busy updating the model policy manual, which lives on their website, there's the model policy manual, and then there's the policy manual of every individual school district who has adhered to this, we are one of them. And so Amy and her subcommittee over the last couple of years have been trying to get their arms around all these crazy updates, there's also some policies that just need to be deleted, there's some brand-new policies. So they have built the mother of all spreadsheets.
He did.
Yes, Sean. That spreadsheet is going to kind of act as our guide as we go, both the subcommittee and the school committee, that will remain in the meeting materials so that the public can kind of track what is happening on the policy front. Much of this is incredibly mundane, but what we're going to basically do is bring, Amy's going to try to bring about 20 policies at a time to the school committee over the course of the next year. Some, and so by our policy, by our manual, we have to do a first reading of every policy that gives the committee an opportunity to ask probing questions, then the subcommittee presumably meets again, they discuss and manage all of those considerations, then they bring back a final version to the school committee for a quote "second" reading. So what we hope to do procedurally is to have the first reading look exactly like this, where you are going to be given the opportunity to fire away Amy, she will take notes on any things that you have concerns about, and the subcommittee will manage it. On the second reading, it will be captured in the consent agenda so that we can just vote them all into existence at the same time. And then she will have 20 new ones, you know, later, as a first reading in new business. So that's kind of the process that we've established to try to manage this as best we can. So, that said, I'm going to push it over to Amy, she is going to guide us through this policy first reading for the following, I think, 17 policies.
So I just wanted to actually bring up two, the rest of them we felt were pretty minor. The one, the first one we wanted to bring up was the ACR redline, so one of the things that we talked about was if you go, if you scroll down under resources, we put the name of the current director of human reso, like we put in the contact information, and we assume that's okay, but we're wondering if you just wanted us to put the title in and not put, do you know what I'm trying to say? I don't know how you wanted to do that, but that was like a question that we had for this one, and wondered what the committee wanted to do.
Any thoughts?
I don't like it.
Was that your edit?
Well, only because, I mean, I, because that means if the person changes, we have to re-vote the policy again.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yep.
I think that's appropriate.
So can I get a, I know they're so mired in it, can I get a straw vote, would you guys, how many of you guys would like the name to remain in the policy? How many of you guys would like the name to come out of the policy? Can you give me a thumbs down? Okay, there you go. What is the other one you wanted to?
Oh yeah, the only other one that I wanted to say something about.
Before we go on, we, we just want the title for ACR, and is the phone number?
Taken out.
Saying the same? If positions change or?
They usually go in the same office with the same phone.
Okay, so the phone number should be fine?
I think it makes sense to put the title and the phone number, and then if the person in the position changes, an update doesn't need to be made because it is still sending them to the correct person.
Just the district number is the, like, an extension?
Yeah, there's a, there's a operator that answers the phone. Do you have any of the extension?
So we'll leave the address and the phone number and take out the name?
Yeah.
Everybody's okay with that?
Okay. All right, the other one was BJ. There was, so that, all that in, all that in red, Sean, you want to talk about that because you've noticed that change?
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, so I think it's like you said, it wasn't in the, like, it was, it was in the MASC?
Yeah, so this first paragraph in red, that is texted, is currently in our policy manual, but not in the sample language from MASC. So I'm not sure if we're just out of sync with the sample policy language, or if some previous version of this committee thought it was important to add this language.
So it's basically saying that we would be, we should be responsible for working vigorously?
Well, this is the one I was surprised by this policy, I never I never...
Yeah, so this whole policy is about a legislative program. The school committee as an agent of the state must operate within the bounds of the law. We will keep ourselves informed of pending legislation as number one. We will work with our representatives and other groups to develop a legislative program to seek full funding. The school committee chair is the designee. This person will be authorized to speak on the committee's behalf with regard to legislation being considered.
So we added that in too?
Yeah. The draft language says that the committee should appoint someone as their designee. And in our discussion, we thought it made more sense just to have the school committee chair hold that role so we don't have to update this policy every year.
Yeah.
Or their designee if the chair wishes not to do it.
So I'll speak first and say that I think it makes sense to delete that first paragraph red text only because I don't actually know that that is the school committee's job to actively root out laws that are not our friend and work to get rid of them.
I agree.
That would almost be like me advocating for a ballot measure.
I don't like laws telling you what to do, or in this case, policies.
Well, this might lead out to something that was relative to 1995, based on what I'm finding on DESI, so it could just be a thing that was retained.
And should have been written?
I think it's... I agree.
It's a weird thing.
Yeah.
All right. So can I get a thumbs up for anybody in favor of the policy subcommittee removing that red text in the first paragraph? Anybody feel comfortable with that? All right, great. Anything else, Amy, that you wanted to...
That was it. The rest was pretty minor stuff.
All right. But does the committee have any concerns on the 17 policies? Go ahead, Scott.
Policy BA.
AB?
No, BA.
Oh, yeah.
Number four uses an acronym. I think we should say what that acronym means.
Did you guys insert SMART? Is that something that MAS C wanted?
They had it.
They had it.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe just articulate that.
Okay.
Anything else, Scott? Anything else, guys?
I have just a question. Do we want to make it SMARTY since that's what we have adopted? Or are we happy with SMART and then it's our prerogative to add the E or not?
So inclusion and equities are the two words at the end that we have been using in our personnel subcommittee training of the committee on establishing goals. It is something that we value in our school committee goal-setting process. Can I get a thumbs up if everybody's okay changing it to SMARTY? Give me a thumbs up if you're okay with that. Are you in the middle?
Well, I wonder if we need to specify what kind of goals, whether it can just be establishing practical goals. But if we're going to... We could change our kind of goals in the future. I am just a little... It feels a little weird to be prescribing a format for the goals, but I don't have strong feelings on this one.
So you want to make SMART all together?
Just throwing it out there, so...
I actually... I would argue to keep it in only because it's kind of indicative of the whole educator evaluation process that we set SMART goals, even if we hold Kirk to SMART goals.
It's a sin.
Is it? So I felt like I had enough people to say yes to SMARTY.
Yep.
You've convinced me.
All right.
I just have a question about the last sentence in the second paragraph of this policy. It says, "It," I think it's referring to the school committee, "must carry out its functions openly while seeking the comments of public students and staff in its decision-making And I just wonder if we should amend that sentence to say, "while providing opportunities for comment by public students and staff in its decision-making process?"
I would want you to think about the precedence that we set every time that we make a change to a policy and knowing the volume of policies coming through. So like, I guess that would just be like MAS C is making recommendations and we're following them.
Yeah, but it says, "We seek the comments of public students and staff in our decision-making process."
Our current policy says that.
Yeah.
I actually think that's appropriate. Whether we do it or not is another matter, but it actually is appropriate for us to seek those comments.
I totally agree, but I'm just...
I think what I heard Jackie just saying is that we don't want to editorialize too much in this process because we could get really bogged down if we start wordsmithing.
Which is like kind of taking conversations that we've had as a policy subcommittee and reminded ourselves like, what is... What's the spirit and responsibility of this policy? Like, how would it look like in implementation? So it's really trying to use that as a way to think about the ones that we choose.
Is everybody okay keeping the language as it is? Can I get a thumbs up if you're okay leaving it the way that it is? Do you live with it?
No.
No? Okay. Question?
I think a comment relating to this. I wonder if like there's value in not straying from the MAS C reference version of policy unless there's a strong compelling interest to do so. Just as we're about to go through 100 and multiple of these, that might be useful framework to think about when we should change language.
Because we're already having those issues. We'll come across a policy and it's like quite a bit different from what they suggest the revision is. And we're like, how did it get from this to that? Like, there's stuff that's been done and why is it different from the... I don't know. Yeah, so there's just some of that going on already.
So sticking to the model policy is what we're trying to do.
As much as I think as we can, yeah.
I just think we need to be careful about approving policies. I think we just need to think through what we're approving. That's my only point.
Instead of just rubber stamping.
I agree.
Yeah.
Right. So I guess a comment to that would be like, that is exactly what the policy subcommittee is bringing to you all, which is why like when you look at the tracking document that's open for anybody on the school committee, as well as anyone with a link, we're really talking through like which ones require major revision and input from the school committee and...
Keith, is there a way to provide input on this spreadsheet?
We strategically chose none of those because we need to flesh out as a policy subcommittee the ones that we comparing existing and recommended red line versions and then what we would want to bring to you all. And really balance how many of those larger conversations would we have every single school committee meeting until budget.
So I would just say that this spreadsheet is going to forever be open to everyone, including the public. We never want to be collaborating outside of a meeting on a living document. So just be wary of that. If any of the school committee members want to weigh in at the subcommittee process or level, you can go to those meetings. Or if you wanted to, you could send an email to the chairwoman, to Amy, about something. If you can't make the meeting, I'm sure Amy will bring something up if you need her to. All right. So any other discussion on the first reading here of all of these?
Super nitpicky, but if we're going to use SMARTY to relate to the superintendent goals, his goals say SMART.
Where are they?
They're right on top of his goals.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It just says SMART, so just...
Got it. And that policy is about our goals, right? Our operational goals. And so SMART is taken from DESI. Neshova transformed it into SMARTY. And so maybe it's not as important for the superintendent because he doesn't have the I and the E on his, but we do. And that's in our spreadsheet, which we'll see next. Okay. Good, check it out. All right, guys, we're moving on. This will fall into the consent agenda next time, assuming that all Amy makes all and the subcommittee make all the changes that we just discussed. So thank you for that, guys. And then I assume you'll bring 20 more next time-ish?
That's a reward, yeah.
Karen, thank you so much for all of that and for putting it in that spreadsheet because it was just... It was so easy to look at the spreadsheet and say, you know, this is a minor revision or this is something that required, requires a lot more of your attention, and that made it a lot easier to weed through all of the changes in all of those policies. So thank you, thank you for that.
Yeah, and those colors, that's going to show it. Like, the yellow ones are the ones we're going to talk about, right? So we're... That's what the yellow means, is like we need to bring that up and talk about it.
Do the key on there?
The red.
No. The red is like, we're not ready to do anything. Like, stop. There's an issue with this.
Can you get color coding too on there? Gold, shot dark.
And the blue, what's the blue?
The blue is like in progress. That's what we're focusing on right now. Yeah, yep.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Well done, guys. Well done. Excellent job. So let's talk a little bit about our school committee goals, which we discussed at length at the last meeting. We presented them all. I'm hoping... Alita, are they in the last meeting's materials? Thank you so much. So Alita is bringing that up. We are so good at this at this point. There's nothing terribly groundbreaking here because we're just really trying to elevate the same work year after year to do what is within our purview. Is there any... Well, let's start with a motion, Amy.
I move to approve the school committee goals as presented on September 25th, 2024.
And I'm going to second that. Do you guys have any further discussion on the goals? Shandra?
Do the members need to be updated reflecting new members?
In particular, the vacancy, Shandra?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. And I think that...
I mean, do we know what our new member of...
Can you just scroll a little bit, Alita? So I think that is... So Robin and our new member from Stowe will need to be assigned. And so I think that communication and policy are where the two new members are going to land. And I'm trying to create balance by town. And so we have Bolton Lancaster... Bolton, yeah. So our Stowe member is going to land on communications, and Robin is going to land on policy. I think it's the way that that shakes out. I'll need to think about it for a moment. Okay.
Can I ask a question? I wonder if we should, in the same way, somewhere we were going to put what SMARTY is, I guess one of those policies or SMART is, should we put that on here too, just for the benefit of public?
Yeah.
Whereas, you know, people roll on and we need to figure this out.
Isn't the policy linked at the top? Is that the policy?
Yeah, that's actually...
So that covers us?
Okay.
Okay, cool. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the school committee goals?
Yay!
Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Will these go on the website?
They will go on the website, not in this format, but Alita and I will work together to put it in that nice format that Shova does on the main page. That's just like a narrative... It's more narrative style or bulleted. All right, guys, so on to subcommittee or advisory reports. I wonder in all of your travels if anybody has anything that they would like to make the committee aware of.
I do.
Yes, thank you.
So Dr. J met for their onboarding and first meeting of the year on October 1st. It was really exciting because we will be convening as a team and person here on November 12th. It'll be the president-person meeting in well over a year. I gave a recap of the proposed goals that we would be voting on today, and a sub-working group of Dr. J is working on the ask for the presentation for the October 24th, maybe?
Yeah.
So they're working on that, and our presentation will be available for that.
Fantastic. Thanks for that, Jackie, and thanks, Dr. J, for continuing to work so hard. Any other subcommittee or advisory reports? All right, guys, so we are moving on in our agenda. Let's talk about items for next agenda. Can you have the planning calendar, Alita? As you guys can see on the planning calendar, our next meeting is on October 23rd. It is a remote meeting, so we have a few things that are listed there. So the policy first reading that's on under new business, you will make us aware of what that will be if, you know, I mean, obviously you guys are cranking, but you can't get something to us every single meeting that's understood. You guys don't meet every other meeting.
Well, we already fleshed that out for next time, so we're just still... We'll get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Anything you would like to see on there or anything that you want to see on a future I do want to remind everybody that the school choice update that we thought might come at this meeting, Kirk thought it would make more sense to roll that into his annual projected enrollment presentation, and so he's going to kind of bring those two things together for us to make greater context. So that's next meeting.
There's nothing else under finance and operations, but it's that...
That's normally something that you guys build on the go.
So the enrollment will inform the budget, but it's not necessarily a finance and operations agenda item relative to school choice.
One thing that I would like to see happen is maybe get budget and warrant, put an agenda item on... Because we used to do the operations reports and...
That's what I was wondering.
And Ross, you would give us... Is that still something that we're going to...
Yeah, so we will. So I have a meeting next week with Kirk to go through all of the finance and operation items that should be on the planning agenda for the calendar year or for the school year. So I did share a draft with budget and warrant at the last meeting for the end-of-year report of last year's budget and then a preliminary for the first two months. I won't get into detail why it's not as explanatory as the first three months of the school year. We can talk about that, but it'll end up on the agenda for the second meeting in this month. So next meeting, we'll be looking at those reports.
All right. So Kirk will... He's always actively updating the planning calendar, so you guys can refer back to it if you want, but you can also send to me anything that you would like to see on there anytime. Anything else on the planning calendar? Just like that. All right, guys, so that is that for the items for next agenda. If something comes to you, you can let me know. And our most exciting bullet point of the night, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Thanks, Karen. Sorry, I've got a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Good night, everyone.